Welcome everybody to the Board of Education meeting. We had a lot of stuff going on, so sorry we're starting a little bit late. It's actually 6:37, we should have started at 6:30, but we've been trying to get started. So with that, welcome everybody, thank you for being here. I'd like everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then we'll have a moment of silence after we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have roll call Monica please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Here.
Dr. Hyde?
Here.
Mrs. Quintana?
Here.
Mr. Rola?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
I need an approval of the minutes for May the 3rd, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call Monica please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye. Or yes, excuse me.
No.
No, it's aye.
You are heard.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye and no. Okay.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
I need an approval of the minutes for May the 7th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call Monica please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of May the 8th, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call Monica please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
I need to amend the agenda tonight for two items. One is to add recognitions. The recognitions will be prior to the superintendent's report. And then we had a forensic audit update that we were gonna try to do in study session, but we ran out of time. I'd like to move that to superintendent's report and give them time to give us an update on that. So can I get an amendment?
You can propose it, and if there's no objection, then you could ask for that agenda that you just stated to be approved.
Okay. So are there any objections to those?
Now you can ask for a motion as to the agenda subject to those revisions.
So then I would like to ask for an approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I have roll call Monica please.
Mr. Archuleta?
Aye.
Dr. Hyde?
Aye.
Mrs. Quintana?
Aye.
Mr. Rola?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
So now we'll move into recognitions.
Yes, we do have one. We have the principal of Kemp Elementary School, please come up. Mr. Robert Savage. I think you wanna highlight some of your students?
Yeah, thank you. Wasn't expecting this, I'm speaking off the cuff. Thank you for having me up, Dr. Breako, President Archuleta, members of the board. We did have some of our students here today sharing their country extravaganza projects. Unfortunately, there weren't more, only three came. It was kind of short notice, we asked 30 to come on Friday. Three were able to come. This was a really cool project that we worked on during the CMAS testing. We wanted something that would be fun for the kids, but also engaging and still academic. It was a cross-curricular project, they worked on it with the specials teachers, technology, art, also with, we specialize at Kemp, so the literacy teacher worked on it, as well as the math teacher and the science and social studies teacher. And they had some really cool projects, they brought food out from all the countries they studied, and there was a lot of really good food. Thanks to Mr. Thomas for coming out and enjoying some of that food and listening to the kids share their projects, but we had a really great time, we're really proud of them.
And then we have their projects are outside.
There's three projects out in the hallway, if you guys wanna see them when you head out, they're gonna be still up when we leave.
Do we have any of the students here?
I don't know if they stuck around or not. Are we, we see them out there?
No.
No, they left. But if you have any certificates, I'll be sure they get them tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Savage?
Good, our next presentation will be preliminary budget presentation by Mr. Sean Milner.
Good evening, Board of Education.
Are you doing preliminary?
I believe you have a copy of the preliminary budget, and I think we're gonna try and pull it up on the screen so we can follow through there as well. Just to keep in mind, this is the preliminary budget, so we view this as kind of the rough draft. We will be meeting on June 12th to go over there and have public comment on this. We'll be taking this on June 26th to the Board for final approval of the budget, so...
What was the date?
June 12th, we'll be meeting for public comment, and then on June 26th, we'll meet for final approval of the budget. So as we go through, and we meet on the 12th, you know, if there's changes that we'd like to be made or updates, we can go through that and make those changes.
Thank you.
So on page two, we have the estimated general fund reserve balance. So as of July 1st, 2017, we had a reserve balance of the general fund of $17.3 million. Based on the estimated 18 revenues and expenditures, we believe we'll have about a $2.6 million surplus, bringing that total general fund reserve up to roughly $20, $20 million. On page three, we have a five-year history of the general fund.
Excuse me, can y'all widen that so you got audience? I can't even see it from here, and I got it on my computer.
Okay, so it looks like that's as big as we can get it. I can point out those numbers if we need to specifically, as we run through here. This is the five-year history of the general fund for revenues and expenditures, but I really wanna key in on the 1718 estimated actual and the proposed budget for 1819. So overall, for property taxes, $23 million is what we're looking at for 1819, $2.4 million in specific ownership tax, and about $750 for other local. Coming down from the state support, we estimate about $36.4 million in state equalization, another $2.4 in state categoricals. Federal revenue, this impact aid, we estimate at about $2.6 million. We do have two transfers out of the general fund for nutritional services and the activity fund of $934,000. We're looking at new options for investments to increase that to about $280,000. So overall, in the general fund for revenue for 1819, we believe we'll have about $67.3 million in revenue coming in. On the expenditure side, for employee salaries, we anticipate and try to budget this at 100% capacity, being funded for all positions being filled. So we have $43.7 million in salaries, $13.8 in benefits, $2.5 roughly in purchased services, $4 million in supplies and materials, $1.9 in utilities, $500,000 in property and equipment, and $782,000 in other expenditures for $67.3 million in expenditures. General assumptions for the revenue side for the general fund, the School Finance Act increased per pupil amount of $486.56, which gives us an increase of roughly $3 million this year. So there's a, we saw that coming through the legislative, you know, they kept on buying down the negative factor, which really helped and impacted us in a positive way here, of about $3 million there this year. Also because of higher property taxes, we do think we'll estimate that we'll see about $2 million increase in property tax revenue. State equalization, about an $807,000 increase, and we're looking at about a $300,000 increase overall in federal impact aid as well. The assumptions for expenditures, pending the approval tonight from the Board, increasing the 5% COLA to all employee groups, salary increase of $3.4 million, and that is the estimated actual to budget increase. This year, we filled positions at about a 96% rate, so what we initially budgeted for total salaries wasn't totally what we expended, because we weren't able to fill all of those positions. So when we budgeted at 100% in 1718, we only filled at about a 96% rate. So that's why you see a 3.4% million dollar salary increase there. Same thing for benefits, you see a $1.2 million increase there, because we weren't able to fill all of those positions, so it looks like a larger number than what was budgeted. Property and equipment, we'll see a decrease of roughly $500,000. Supplies and materials, an increase of $700,000, and the other expenditures, looking at an increase of $637,000. Staffing summary by type. Administration, we see pretty flat. Increase about three positions for certified employees, will increase 11 positions in classified, that's mostly made up of the grant, I believe that we should be coming to the Board tonight for about 10 FTE pair positions, and support in technical, two and a half position increase So overall, for the general fund revenue expenditure summary, we're looking at this conservatively, so again, salaries and benefits, we're looking at funding all those positions at 100%. So from day one to the last day of school, we budget that we'll have every position filled throughout the entire school year. With that being said, we show a deficit of $24,000 that would bring the reserve balance from $20 million to $19.98 million in the general fund. And during the next slides, Eddie Storres is gonna go over some of those funds outside of the general fund here.
Thank you.
Good evening. So I'm gonna start with the risk management fund, and just kinda go over the highlights here. You know, mainly what you're seeing is, we're starting with a beginning fund balance of about $824,000, and we're gonna have a transfer in of $1.6 million, and our expenses next year are projected to be up about $150,000 from the prior year, and that's, you know, based on conversations with Sid Zipp and the experience we're seeing on claims. So the ending fund balance there is projected to be $574,000. So I'll go over the special revenue funds, which includes nutrition services, the grants fund, the athletic fund, and the fee-supported fund. So nutrition services, we're budgeting to have a beginning fund balance of approximately $930,000, and our revenue there is $3.4 million, mostly federal grants, and then expenditures for the year at $3.9. So that's a decrease of approximately $530,000, which I think we've spoken about before. And, you know, again, some of these numbers in our expense projection are conservative. We're, you know, we're budgeting to say, what would, if all of our positions are filled the entire year, what would the expense be? So we expect to do, hopefully, better than this budget, but we are showing the trend that the balance in nutrition services is going down, and probably one more year after this one, we would need to look at, you know, where do we stand then, and do we need additional funds in there, or another way to fund that. In the grants fund, you're seeing, you know, revenues are equalling expenses, we've got $14 million in that fund as both revenues and expenses. One thing which is not in there right now is the best grant, which we just heard about the other day. So we'll have to adjust this before the final budget to include that amount, but you'll still see revenues equalling expenses and no fund balance there, because we have an expense. We're able to ask the state for reimbursement of that expense, so there's not a fund balance in that fund. The athletic, the athletic fund is gonna, is projected to start the year with a fund balance of about $85,000, and they have revenue mostly student activity fees and gate receipts of about $45,000, and they'll receive a transfer in of $634,000. And then their expenditures, and there's a, you know, a little bit of a slight difference between what's on our slide here and what's on the actual preliminary budget, which we have posted, which is, the total expenditures are projected to be $763,000 compared to the $725, but that would, that is budgeting to spend that entire fund balance, which, you know, may or may not happen, but it is a slight increase in that total expenditure budget in athletic fund from the prior year. The fee-supported fund is projected to start the year with $167,000 in fund balance, and they'll have revenue of $236,000 charges for services. For some programs, their charges for services aren't gonna be sufficient to cover, or their beginning fund balance to cover their expenses during the year. And because of that, in order to keep every program within the fee-supported fund positive by program, we have to make a transfer from the general fund into the fee-supported fund to fund those programs. So those, that's the transfer you're seeing of the $300,000, and that's comprised of $155,000, which will be adult ed, $10,000 for the before and after programs, and then $135,000, which is the Lester Arnold childcare program. And that'll leave the ending fund balance in the fee-supported fund at $162,000 approximately. And the debt, in the debt service fund, what you're gonna see is basically that our expenses are budgeted, or write out the payments we have to make for the 2013 and 2015 bonds, and the revenue is equal to the taxes we're gonna levy in order to do that, make those payments. I would note that our legal debt limit, if we do wanna issue bonds, is projected to be $82,000, or $82 million in 1819. So the capital projects fund, and, you know, I guess I would start off by noting again that this fund right now, in the preliminary budget that you've seen and in this presentation, doesn't yet reflect the best grant. So that's gonna be a significant change that we'll have to incorporate into this before it's a final budget. So what we have in there right now is the energy performance leases, $271,000. We have concrete and asphalt projects at Kearney, Adam City High School, and two small ones at the middle schools, that's at $670,000. We have the Rosemary proceeds are currently included as a expenditure, figuring that money would be used as part of that best grant, but that's, we appropriate that every year in case you do decide to purchase land, but in this case, it's going to go towards that also project. We have the roofing projects for DuPont and Kemp at the 1.1 million. We have technology upgrades at $630,000, and, you know, there, we're trying to do this guessing game of how much of the current year's allocation of technology refresh money will be spent by the end of the year, and whatever's not spent, we then will increase this number in order to keep that money appropriated in the next year. We've included $360,000, which would be the cost to pay the payment on the CLPs in the best grant, so that piece is included here. What is not, you know, this best grant part is, we're working on that, but what's not included yet is you would see another source of revenue coming into that fund, and then you'll have to see the entire cost of that, well, probably the entire cost of that program or that building, then being shown as an expense in addition, and that's not yet included in here, we don't have that finalized. We have $400,000 for the athletic turf at the high school, and we have $70,000 in instructional equipment for the schools, we're gonna allocate it to three different schools, I think we talked about that previously. We have $30,000 in nutrition services equipment, of $140,000 in vehicles, which will be used for leases in the white and yellow fleet, and then we have a contingency of $250,000. Under safety, we have $100,000, I think the actual preliminary budget that's posted, I think we have that number at $130,000, we're still working on exactly what the safety number there is going to be, but that gives you a fairly good picture of what the, right now, the capital reserve fund is gonna look like.
So by Colorado law, we have to publish something in a newspaper that states that this is gonna be, our budget is gonna be on display within 10 days of the preliminary budget being presented to the Board of Education. So we're going to send something out in the newspaper within the next 10 days before June 1st, to let everybody know that on June 12th, we will be having a public hearing, so anybody from the community can come and talk and look at the budget, have suggestions, comments on it, so we still have time to make changes if the Board so chooses, to make any changes to the preliminary budget that's presented. Then on June 26th, we will be presenting, hopefully, the final budget that will be adopted by the Board of Education. So I'd like to open it up, if there are any questions or comments on the initial preliminary budget.
Dr. Hyde, do you have any questions?
No, I'm saying...
Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Milner, you gave us a presentation before on the budget, and you were speaking about subs, and you was telling us, I believe, I'm not gonna quote you word for word, but you were saying, how much did we spend on subs last year?
I believe it was $600,000, $630,000 roughly?
$630,000 on subs, and I do believe you said, was it Kelly Services?
Kelly Services, correct.
That they can provide service for the district if we pay a million dollars.
It was roughly a $300,000 increase, so...
Add about a $350,000.
Correct.
Correct. Where was that $350,000 coming from?
As of right now, that wasn't budgeted, because we didn't move one way or the other. We do have roughly $400,000 in contingency, and again, this is the rough draft, so if the Board so feels to move forward with that, we can add that in here and still make those changes, but it would come out of the general fund.
Right, it'd come out, but I'm just saying, the $350 would be added, so you're saying the $350 would be added to the general fund. I mean, coming out the general fund to be added that $650,000, right?
Correct. So we would have to look at either over-expending in the general fund, or if we're adding $300,000, maybe look at where can we reduce on some other areas in the general fund to make up for that.
Okay, 'cause where I'm going at with this is, we just had a roundtable with Ms. Mettler, and for me, it was saying, and it's all about budgets, so I'm going this way, was the summary in our student performance, the Board is, we have 10 FTEs for All Sup 3, Central 3, DuPont 3, Hanson 2, Kemp 3, Monaco 3, Rose Hill 3, and it's coming out of a grant fund. So I'm looking at this for myself, and I'm trying to figure out, we had Star Literacy was low, grades 4 to 8, and math targets grades 3 to 8, and I heard you say $350,000, and I'm saying, for myself, I like to put that money back into the district. So if my students is having trouble reading and math, and it's $350,000, and I know the Board, we have to approve this and, you know, come together with this, I don't see the middle schools, because if I'm not mistaken in the roundtable, Ms. Mettler was saying that the high school is improving, they're doing a lot better than anybody expected sitting in this room today, and I commend them for that if they're in here. And my, me speaking, Harvest, how come we don't have, and this not to you, but it'd be to Ms. Borges, we don't have no paras for 6th, 7th, and 8th graders? That if it's $350,000 that we can put for substitutes, I'm sure we can incorporate that money to help our students read and advance their reading and math. Now, I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just thinking out loud, 'cause I've been writing notes here, because you did say that we did get an extra $400 per student, but I did use $350 per student, I only did $7,000, and I came up with $2,450,000 extra with the $400 we might get, but $350,000. Am I right? Or how much did we get extra with the Governor did?
It is $3 million, but it's based on, you're looking at, we're not just multiplying that 485 by the 7, 7,000.
I just took, I just took $350,000, multiplied times 7,000 students, and I just came up with $2.4 million, but I didn't do the, all the math that y'all did, I just did mine right here, sitting here, thinking, how come we should be, 'cause we're talking about the budget, and we got principals sitting in here, we got teachers and parents, and we got the CDE, and we just had a class right here, a roundtable. So I'm trying to put myself in the position to ask, how come the Star Literacy, because we don't have 3rd graders with FTE paras? we don't have third graders with FTE paras in here. I don't see third graders. Do you, um, I don't see third, I don't see third grader. I see K through two, and I don't see K through two literacy having trouble reading. Do you, do you help me out? Do you see, I don't see that. But I, I, so, and then I asked, I, I believe I did ask to come back to the board with all, other alternatives about subs, but y'all didn't come back.
Yeah.
So, now, I'm, I'm trying to give some alternatives now. So, if the Board of Education would come back and asks the two middle school, say for instance, twelve paras, six apiece, or twenty paras for the middle schools, ten apiece, would I be able to get a, a estimate about that, paras, so we can find out to help the sixth and eighth graders in pathway plan, to put that in the budget for math targets and Star Literacy? How, and can we add two more paras to the seven, uh, elementary schools for the second, the third and fourth graders? 'Cause I only see three. I, I, I mean, can we get budgets for that?
Yeah, off, off the top of my head, I would say it would be roughly thirty-five to forty-thousand dollars, being conservative for, per para. So, if you wanted to look at ten more paras, you're looking at three-hundred-and-fifty to four-hundred-thousand dollars.
But if I'm not mistaken, if I took three-hundred-and-fifty dollars times seven-thousand, and I came up with two-point-four-million, that shouldn't be the problem for this district. See, I think Mr. Rolla always said, we always lowballing. I'm not lowballing. I asked for twenty paras for the middle schools and third and fourth graders in this district. I would like to get a, um, an estimate for that as soon as possible. Matter of fact, I would like to see that in Thursday's update for the Board of Education, so we can look at that. Twenty.
Friday's update?
Friday's update, yes. Is that, is that, can we do that, Dr. Hyde, Ms. Q? Can we do that? Can we look at that? Can we understand? Matter of fact, we got principals right here. Ms. Vickers, can you please come up? And Mr. Pearson, can you come up? If the, if, if we was to ask you, 'cause we talking about budget, and we went through a roundtable, and I'm trying to figure out for myself, 'cause if they got an extra four-hundred, two-point-some-million dollars to put in our district to help our students, how would paras help y'all, or what could we do to make y'all more successful than what y'all are doing?
Oh, my gosh. Bless you all for even just thinking down this way. Adding a para at each grade level for each content of literacy and math would be a tremendous help to the teachers, to where the teachers, when it comes time for independent practice, could pull a small group of guided reading or guided math to help while the para is, is assisting the other students. It's always the, the teacher who's the master in the instructional piece, so she would take those lower-end kids and do like a guided reading with them. But that would be a tremendous help to our teachers.
Mr. Pearson?
Agreed. Right now, we're in a situation where I've got grade-level paras, so I have one for sixth, one for seventh, and one for eighth. Each grade level is approximately two-hundred-and-eighty to three-hundred kids.
So, you got one para for three-hundred students?
Yes.
How many do you have?
We're almost similar in numbers. The only paras we have are instructional bilingual paras that follow our NEPS to the classrooms to interpret what the teacher's saying. It's not so much to, to assist and stuff. It's a translation that we provide for the students and to, to try to accommodate them in speeding up the language development.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm out of questions. Thank you.
And just to, to go back to, to that, you know, we show roughly four-point, four, four-and-a-half million dollars increase in, in between salaries and benefits if they are filled. So, we also show about six-million dollars increase of revenue, so about four-point-six million of that six-million-dollar increase is going towards salaries and benefits pending the approval of those contracts and pending if every position is filled at a hundred percent moving forward. And going back to your initial question on the subs, I know Human Resources is looking at those other options for the subs. I think you guys asked for four or five different options, and they're getting ready to present those to the board soon, other than Kelly Services.
I thank you, but that was over a month ago that I asked for those different options. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm moving forward for different options to, for my students and my teachers and my principals. Right now, my foot is on the pedal because we, we talking about the budget money. So, I thank both of you gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like me to go ahead and continue with?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Are you on the, Mr. Joyce, are you on the, the same one or the forensic?
The forensic.
Okay, that one's going to be last. I've got the Colorado Department of Education who we have scheduled. So, at this time, we do have another presentation from the Colorado Department of Education. We have Ms. Lisa Medler, who's going to give us an update.
Okay. Thank you, President Archuleta, school board members, Superintendent Abrego. So, I, this is going to be fairly quick since I reported out a month ago. I'll just give you a little bit of an update over the last month. Pretty much, I've spent more, more of my time with you guys, so I can give a little bit of update on that. But the main focus of this last month is in meeting with the district and helping them to get ready for that final round of progress monitoring. So, to remind you, we had set up a quarterly progress monitoring process for the district and for the high school. And to be clear, the district is pulling that data together now. The discussions and the review of the data will really be taking place next week for the high school and for the district. So, while I'm hoping to see positive results, I, it's, I'm not quite ready to report out on that, and that'll be more for the, the June report. Dr. Abrego during the work session did share what I think he thought was promising results coming out of the high school, so, so he, he was the one reporting on that. I also attended the community work session that was held a couple of weeks ago, just so you know that I was there, just as an observer. And then otherwise, like I said, I have been working with you guys. And so, just to recap, I think fairly quickly, you guys had asked to spend some time on the turnaround plan, and we talked quite a bit about progress on that plan. So, we, I think you guys are focused on that timeline. I'm definitely seeing a sense of urgency there, so just wanted to reflect on that. Neck, at the next work session next month, we will focus more on the, the options that are in front of you. If you go back in front of the State Board of Education next fall, that would be contingent upon your plan types when the, the district and school performance frameworks are released. So, if the district is still on the clock, then you'll need to come before the State Board next fall. Same thing for the high school. The other thing that we kind of elevated was for Central Elementary. If they remain on the clock as well, they'll be coming for, in front of the State Board next spring for a hearing, okay? So, those are, those are the three big, big topics right now in front of us, so really taking a look at those options. Again, I think we'll dig in a lot deeper on what that means and where, just give you guys a chance to ask questions and get as much information as possible. That really is my focus right now for you as the board, for the district, for the schools, and for your community, making myself available and answer questions as they come up so that people have consistent information, okay? So, that's a big focus for me. The only other thing I wanted to just remind you guys is that CDE is, is playing a little bit of a dual role. You see me, and I'm providing support through this accountability clock process, so I'm playing more of an accountability role. There's a number of folks from CDE that are also providing a lot of supports to your schools and to your district, and so I think sometimes it can get confusing, so please ask questions if you need to differentiate, and we definitely work together and talk together. But I want to make it clear that while I'm very focused on these things and you see me a lot more, there's a lot more coming out of CDE and a lot more activity coming in support of your district. So, happy to actually lay those out if that would be helpful for you guys as well at, at a future time, okay?
Okay.
So, that really is it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. And I want to apologize, I need to dash out. I'm not trying to be rude, but I got to get to another appointment.
We understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then we do have another presentation. We sent some of our administrators to Beyond Textbooks. We have two presentations, one from the elementary's point of view and one from the high school. So, I'm going to start with the elementary. If I could have Mr. Robert Savage come up here and give us a quick presentation on what you saw when you traveled?
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that. Make him, make the picture a little more.
It's like a defensive line.
Maybe twenty-five years ago.
Okay, and I think we're trying to pull up a PowerPoint for you.
Yeah, I get the PowerPoint up.
Okay.
So, Dr. Abrego, President Archuleta, members of the board, we just want to come and talk about our trip to Vail. We had every school in fourteen brought administration and teachers to go visit Vail. As many of you already know, Vail is consistently one of the highest-rated districts in Arizona, so we wanted to go see what we could see and, and what we could implement in our buildings when we come back next fall. Oh, is this? Oh, wow.
Just the arrow. There you go.
So, first, I want to start about reading groups, talk about reading groups. We observed that all reading group times were clearly posted across all classrooms. It would be really easy for a principal to come in and see who was having reading group at what time and exactly what objective they were working on. Next year, all the elementary schools in fourteen are taking place in some reading audits where we're going to be doing walkthroughs with a checklist to make sure that, so the same things we saw happening in Vail are happening in our schools next year as well. Centers and workstations, when you have a reading group, the rest of the kids in the room are working on centers and workstations. We noticed that all centers were literacy-based and had step-by-step descriptor cards with objectives and can-do statements to help the students know what they're supposed to do. Here's a picture of a kinder first and third grade example. Students always had to complete the literacy-based centers before working on optional centers, and there were very clear expectations posted in all middle school classrooms as well. Next year, the next steps for us, we asked Justin if these were available on the BT website. He said they currently weren't, but he would work on getting them on and then having them be in a form that the teachers can edit also so that we can use them next year in our centers and our schools. Objectives and essential questions. We observed common objectives, essential questions, and can-do statements that were posted in all the classrooms. It was really evident that all the grades were following the BT calendar and that every teacher within a grade level was working on the exact same thing. Common planning is, is an expectation that we have in fourteen, but it was really obvious looking at the P, at the Vail classrooms that they are following that framework from BT, and every classroom was staying together. So, the middle school, also, let's talk about that part.
So, we're also going to be working this summer to create common assessments and benchmark assessments. So, there have been teachers that have been recruited from each of the schools to work with Jamie Ball to create those benchmark assessments this summer, and that'll give us an opportunity to not only have common assessments, but be able to use that data to improve our instruction over time.
The enrich reteach block, I went too fast. Back up. They have an enrich reteach block in Vail, just like we have here, but one thing that we noticed was that by every door, there was a little whiteboard with names written down where those kids were going for their enrich and reteach. In fourteen, we do have enrich reteach. We use assessment to decide if kids need to be re-taught or if they can go to an enrichment block. But one thing we don't have is a common system of telling the kids where to go or, or who they go to. And this is just something if you're doing look-forers as a principal, it's really easy to come in and see, oh, wow, this, this class has kids going where they need to go this week. We, we can see that they're differentiating. We didn't, it was important, we felt, to note that Vail does have a lot more support staff than we have. They have a full-time para in every kinder and first grade classroom. Some schools, like namely my school in fourteen, only has two instructional paras for the whole building. They also have reading interventionists and enrichment teachers, and I'm not aware of any school in fourteen that has one of those.
And I think speaking to the point we were discussing earlier, it's been a challenge also at the secondary level where we are very limited in our instructional support in terms of paras.
Daily math review. Beyond Textbooks has suggested daily math review questions that spiral through the previously taught math standards, and then they start the math class off with that. This helps them to ensure bell-to-bell instruction and not wasting any time. All Beyond Textbook schools will have access to these daily math review items, and we'll be looking for those next year as well. Oh, sorry, there was a middle school one there.
Yeah, so same deal for the middle school. We were very impressed with their daily math review, so that is something that we do want to implement at the middle school. We've got a lot of kids that are coming to us that are well below grade level, and our struggle for our teachers happens to be that they, one, want to give them obviously the access to grade-level standards, but at the same time, the challenge is, is if the kids don't have those building, building blocks, then we're not necessarily meeting that target. And so, we believe that daily math review will help us to get there.
Technology. We observe students using technology for research and for writing. These pictures show the students working on Chromebooks, using a BT graphic organizer on point-of-view. Students were taking part in audiobook annotations, and the teacher had them interacting with fictional texts. And this is a, a source of pride with all the new Chromebooks we have in the schools. We are seeing this in our classrooms as well, so it was validating to see it in Arizona. And finally, they have a, a focus on bell-to-bell instruction. It was very evident in everything they do that they, they believe in every minute counts. And I think that's something that we can definitely improve on in fourteen, and as we improve our PBIS models, practice our routines and procedures, we can work on losing less and less instructional time to transitions. So, any questions?
So, I have a question for you, based on your experience with BT, using it this year. Did you use it this year?
We have it at Kemp in fifth grade only.
Right. So, um, so my question is, is pretty simple. I know the curriculum is embedded in Benchmark. Are the teachers struggling to gather the, the curriculum out of Benchmark and add it to the BT, or are they just utilizing the BT cheat sheets that they have with them? Is, have you checked on that?
With my experience in BT in fifth grade, it's, and we also specialize in Kemp, so I only had one literacy BT teacher, and she was able to find the Benchmark correlating activities and, and stories and things like that that correlate with the BT standard for that week. I can't speak for all of the BT schools if they're doing that as well, but I do know the district is working on a correlation this summer for Benchmark and for Math and Focus that they can give to the teachers in August and say, okay, you're on week two, day three of BT, this is what correlates for you in Benchmark, this is what correlates for you in Math and Focus, to help them out.
Okay. Any other questions?
Are we on the same page with Vail as far as our students that do not retain the standard? Are they doing the same thing we do? Are we doing something different that maybe we should be looking at to make sure we get all our students up to par?
Yeah, as far as enrich reteach or kids that don't get it the first time?
Right.
They're following the Beyond Textbooks model, which we also follow. I think one of the challenges we have versus Vail is, right now, because they're scoring so high, they have less kids that don't meet that standard, so their enrich groups are much smaller than our enrich groups are, and they have more support staff to spread those kids out. So, they're able to get much more adult-per-student time for those kids that need to enrich than we are.
Superintendent, I've been not holding back, but can the Board of Education receive for each school, each grade level, an organizational chart, what they missing for each grade level? Because if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm mistakenly hearing right... Because if I'm, if I'm not, if I'm mistakenly hearing right, the math intervention they missing, the reading intervention they missing, they, they, I'm hearing the word missing a whole lot. And I'm not hearing, and it's somewhere in there, we are not doing it right. Some, I mean, we doing it right because if the six, if both middle schools is finna get Beyond Textbooks, and then we had a, if I'm not mistaken, we had the teachers that did like Beyond Textbook came and did a presentation and told us how they liked it. But some of them said it took them a while to catch on. So if I'm not mistaken, it says we, you recruiting teachers for benchmark assessments. Is that what?
To, to create them, yes.
Are, are, are we giving them stipends? Are we, what are we doing for those teachers to help us improve the teachers that's going to be getting these type of things? Are we helping the, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
So my understanding is that we will be paying those teachers the certified hourly rate to help create those assessments.
Finance, please. What is the, what is the certified hourly rate? I don't know.
Twenty-seven ninety.
So we paying them the regular hourly pay to do?
It's not their, I'm sorry to interrupt. It's not their hourly play, pay, because that would be more than that. It's just a contractual extra work kind of pay. The twenty-seven ninety rate is, any extra work teachers do, they all get twenty-seven ninety. Because some teachers, if they're the top of the pay scale, they're hourly maybe more than that. Or if they're the bottom, they may not be at that rate. So it's just this flat rate for all teachers.
And do we know how many teachers in the district are helping with this? Because if we got, if I'm not mistaken, how many students at both middle schools?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, so sixteen hundred. How many Chrome computers? Okay. How many teachers is getting new computers? How many teachers got to help? I think I'm doing the math kind of fast for myself, but how many teachers are we, are we talking about? So...
So from my building, there are, I believe, eight that will be participating in it.
Eight. And is eights, is eight enough? Is that?
Two remains contained.
Okay. 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 All right. Thank you. Thank you. Go, go ahead, please.
I just wanted to speak to it because we have, at Rose Hill, we have BT from K through five. And so this year, there has been, we implemented with fidelity, meaning that the curriculum calendar, the BT objectives, and all of those elements that they kind of mentioned on the presentation we're using. So when you say you're hearing about these missing pieces, BT is so over, it has so much information that teachers are having a very difficult time to go find exactly what they're using. But we provided additional resources for reading, for example, phonics. With BT, it doesn't necessarily outline exactly what they need to do with phonics. So we provided them with the book for a phonics book so that they could use that instruction to be able to narrow those gaps as well. So when you're talking about benchmark, the benchmark items were not utilized unless the teachers went and they aligned what Benchmark had to the, to the framework, so what was being presented with BT at that time. So some of our teachers went and did that, and they aligned it. So they were able to use all of the Benchmark material, the curriculum for that, and they were, they're using it within the BT frameworks as well. So those teachers that did that, they felt more successful than others that did not. But this year, we're being very intentional to make sure that every grade level, that work is already done for them, because they had to go and do that work on their own this year, and, but they were able to do that. As far as enrich and reteach for our building, I could only speak for our building, is that our teachers, based on the scores, students could score from zero to five on their enrich and reteach assessments for math. So our students that had fours and fives, they would go into an enriched classroom. And that enriched classroom was designed by the teacher that had the highest scores for all the enrich and reteach. That teacher would teach the students that had, maybe had zeros or ones or twos, depending on the numbers. The threes and fours, our middle teacher would teach those. But that enrich and reteach is like that as well. So this year, what I would like to do is, since we focused on math this year, I would like to do the same thing with enrich and reteach and focus on reading for next year because we all know that if we improve their reading, their math's going to also improve.
Okay.
Thank you. That, that was my initial question. That was my question about, you know, were the teachers struggling to, to garner? And, and thank you for helping them so they didn't have to utilize all of their time to figure out how this aligns. I'm going to make a suggestion that, you know, we, we try and, and figure out what we're doing with curriculum so that way our teachers are, don't have to continually struggle to figure out in my, in my meeting, what needs to be taught. I'm going to suggest that, you know, we're still going to utilize BT, but we've got to make it easier for our teachers to be able to have the curriculum available for them. So you're just going to BT. So you know, that's something that, that you might want to talk with Ms. Bonnie, and, and you guys might want to, you might want to pass that message around to all the other, the other schools that are, that are maybe not doing it the same way and, and having their teachers focus on, you figure out how to get the curriculum out of here, you know? Because it's not, it can't be easy.
It was some work, and, but it's, it can be done. And the other thing you adjust to is as far as the assessments. So what they were talking about is getting the staff together to make these assessments. So basically what that is, is those, we don't want to call it benchmarks, because benchmarks, now it gets confused with the curriculum. So we're looking at it as being our quarterlies. So our BT quarterlies, if we have those first, second, and third quarter, and then fourth quarter is a project-based learning activity. So then we'll be able to see a baseline of our first quarter and how our students are progressing second quarter and third quarter, and then their fourth quarter, then they'll be able to do project-based. So all of that knowledge for the year, they'll be able to have project-based, kind of like what you seen at, from Rose Hill in the pictures, like with the Wax Museum. And just so that you know, is our teachers were so excited this year was the first year that they were able to complete the entire standards and have three weeks before our CMAS testing to go back and fill in gaps and to re-review things that they may not have necessarily covered in detail, and there was still some gaps there. So this was the first year that they were happy to be able to do that, and they were a little taken back by it, like wondering what they were going to do with their extra time. And so we had to talk about if the students mastered it. So those assessments that they're talking about, they've been created for middle, for the elementary school already, and, and those is, we'll be, be using those every quarter so that we're, the test that our assessments that our students are getting, we'll know that they're, by the third quarter, we'll know that, kind of will be very, it would be a great predictor of how we're going to do in our park exams because those are aligned to our state standards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have one more BT presentation, it's going to be by the high school. On their visit to Beyond Textbooks. And I believe, do you have a PowerPoint, you have a PowerPoint also that they're going to bring up for you?
Yes. All right. So we at the high school also had an opportunity to take a small team to Vail in order to observe what a full implementation of the Beyond Textbooks program looked like at the high school level. The purpose of our visit was to see what that full implementation looked like, because we've been doing a very rapid cycle implementation at the high school. And so the opportunity to be able to really see what this looked like two, four, six years into the implementation was really valuable to us. Oh, the clicker's right there. Thank you. So we visited Andrade High School, which was a CTE-focused school. We were able to observe in the auto collision repair classroom, the English classroom, the social studies classroom. And we were also able to discuss with educators the senior capstone project that they were able to implement. The takeaways that we took were that there were very powerful real-world and academic components of the programming where students were engaged in the CTE objectives, but they were also engaged and held accountable to high-level academic expectations as well. And so the multimedia projects that students were being held accountable to were really inspiring as they were being coached and educated in how to achieve these career goals, but also what were the academics that underlie the academic expectations that they were able to present. The senior capstone project in particular, we were able to talk with a teacher who had developed a really powerful rubric to look at academic expectations for their students in their CTE programs to say, if you are a career and technical educationally apt, you need to be able to also be able to perform at these academic levels to really in 2018, in the 21st century, be able to achieve these objectives and actually succeed in these careers, what is it that you need academically? So the CTE and the core content teachers collaborated together in order to create these rubrics and to create these expectations for students. And we saw in their projects and what they were able to create, the real merge between the technical and the academic, which was extremely powerful for us at Adams City High School, because that is exactly the goal that we are seeking with our Pathways projects. We were able to also go to Empire High School, which is one of their comprehensive high schools. They have a school choice program at in Vail. And one of the academic high schools that they had was this Empire High School. We were able to visit English, math, social studies, and science classes from just your basic grade-level academics all the way through their AP classes. And we were observing that they were prepared to be performing, they were prepared to engage in spiralized review of what concepts they had used before and expected to apply past learning into current learning. They were also expected to have high-level critical thinking, and they were also looking at collaboration within pairs and in inquiry-based models, which again is what we're really seeking to do at the high school. And so to see it in action, to see it from a few years in to this process was really valuable to us. Their reteach and enriched structures at the high school level, we've been working with the lab, the lab structure in order to engage in our reteach and enriched structures. And there are some things that have been really strong, and there's also been some challenges that we've faced. So to be able to really discuss and interrogate with teachers who had been implementing this over years and look at what they have tried at different time periods and how they had experimented along the way, their own journey of implementing BT was super, super valuable. And to understand what that impact of student achievement really had for them, because they've had challenges, they had successes, and they were able to really share with us what it was that they felt really worked and didn't work for their population. We were able to really critically analyze our own population and think about, well, what is it that is really applicable back here in Adams 14, which was again extremely valuable. Then the, one of the most valuable takeaways that we had is that Empire High School hosted us a roundtable. They gave lunch to us and the teachers who had been with them from the beginning of the implementation and their coaches. And we were able to really have just a down and dirty get real, let's talk about what this really means. What does BT offer? How do we engage in these standards with kids across the whole level of expectations and student preparedness? And what does it really mean to dig into and expect kids to reach these high-level bars wherever it is that they're coming from? And the opportunity as educator to educator to really just be able to, just take off the gloves, take a look at what is it that you guys have learned over the past several years, having people that were dedicated to implementing this process of school reform and considering our own questions and be able to just ask straight out, what do you think about this? This is what we're challenged with. This is how we're thinking about this. And really be able to just educator to educator, have those real conversations was just a very powerful opportunity for us to consider where we are at the process and then learn from what they've learned from, and also apply our own learnings, which as they said repeatedly, they're learning as much from us as we are from them. And so that was a really powerful component as well.
So another couple of our takeaways as we are observing the classrooms is that they had common board configurations, which is something we've been doing very, very well this year as well, even to a greater extent to, than what they had implemented. So we're really excited to see that that was something that was continuing as well. The common academic standards-based language was everywhere, whether we were in the auto mechanic shop or the fine arts classroom, or even in the cafeteria. And students were engaged in tutoring and then rich and reteach in different structures. The academic standards-based language was the focus of everything, whether it was about behavior, everything was really centered on that. The interdisciplinary systems and structures that they have, something we're starting to implement through our PLC teams and having that common plan time is something that was very strong as well. Their academic behavioral expectations, you can kind of read the responsibility, ethical work practices, self-reliance, preparedness, enthusiasm, critical thinking, and time management. Those are expectations that were in every single classroom. Again, it didn't matter if it was fine arts or an academic classroom, they had those same expectations everywhere. There was a very positive culture that rewarded academic performance. So with the students, they had a freedom with responsibility hour, which was something that was interesting to see that the students earned an off period, and they each had a colored lanyard to show what period they were supposed to be off. But if they were failing a class, then that freedom was taken away, and they went to tutoring in different structures during that time. So it was very interesting to see how those structures took place, to see how we could implement some of those as well to support our students. And some of our next steps that we decided, even on the plane ride home, we had so many ideas and we're excited to start implementing them. We definitely want to increase our communication. They had a lot of structures within their, structures within their structured PLCs. They had partners and mentors. So there was just many more structures that they had in place with PLCs that we'd like to implement next year. So very intentional pairing and grouping within those PLC teams. Because every, again, everything was focused on those academic standards. And the teachers there, they felt like they had more freedom within the curriculum because they didn't have to worry about what to teach and when. They already knew the standards, they had their calendar laid out. And some teachers were very excited about the creativity and freedom that they did have now with having that laid out. Then they got to focus on how they were going to teach to the specific students in their classroom to meet their needs. They also noticed there was a lot of student choice, which would boost engagement, which is something we would like to get to next year after we've already rolled out our first year. The students were very engaged in all of their projects because they were student-led and led by student choice and interest. But they were also grounded in academics and meeting the standards that they needed to meet. And the last thing, we'd want to implement more project-based learning throughout the year. That's one thing we saw in every single classroom, students working on projects, presenting. So it was a very student-focused approach to learning. And you can see some of their projects that were just mind-blowing, how creative they were in the artwork that they did, the mind mapping, the character analysis that they did, and were able to show throughout the year as well. So those are some of our next steps going forward. Thank you.
Anything else? So that's all we have for the BT presentations.
So I want to, I want to thank you all for the presentation. You know, we ask for report-outs on, on the travel and different learning things that we have. I want to thank you for reporting out, at least I can understand what you were doing with that stuff, and that's very important to me. So I want to thank you for your participation and thank you for learning what you needed to learn, and hopefully you share it with the rest of, with the rest of everybody that needs to hear it. So thank you very much.